And I think most of you know that I'm a diabetic. And the test results that came back and that we discussed on that Wednesday morning were indicative that if I do not get my self-care program together, I'm going to have some very serious problems. So on Friday, I resigned as Chair of the Board of Supervisors. Please, if you hear the rumor that I resigned as a supervisor, that's not correct. This is not a crisis situation. But if I do not spend the next few months really adhering to my medical team's advice, including the special diet, et cetera, some things, I have new medication, I am going to have a serious problem. So I want to thank all of you who've worked for me this quarter, sorry, worked with me, not for me, with me, I'm sorry. I'm a little nervous because this is not something I anticipated doing no week ago. But I continue to, I continue on my committee assignments. I'm continuing to support the wonderful team. I support Linda and Rick. And I just want everybody to know that I'm thankful for everything you've done to work with me as Chair and that moving forward, I'm just, I'm going to focus on me so I can be the best for you. And that's the important thing. So with that, I'm going to turn it back to our new Chair.
Thank you, Laura. And thank you for your commitment to taking care of yourself because we need you and we need your teamwork, we need your leadership, we need your help on this. So we'll all be nagging you a little bit.
No chocolate, remember that. You're all, don't give me to say chocolate. It'll walk away.
And helping how we can. Thank you. Next is public comment number one, and this comment period is for the public to address topics on today's agenda. We have a request for Todd Anderson, who wanted to give a little bit of a piece of information to us.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for having me. My name's Todd Anderson. I work with Community and Family Resources of Iowa, behavioral nonprofit, behavioral health nonprofit, excuse me. What I'm also doing is a three-year grant, SAMSa Grant, specifically for mental health first aid. The key word here is free because this is free. What I'm doing is providing mental health first aid trainings. It is an eight-hour training given to individuals to help them better recognize, understand, and to address and even refer individuals who may be living with mental health issues, mental health problems, or substance use disorder as well. It is an eight-hour training that can be split up into two days, can be taken one day, split up however many ways that you would like. Primarily, I am targeting first responders, so public safety, EMS, fire, police officers, higher education as well, veterans, as well as active, inactive military, youth and older adults are the demographics that I'm targeting, not only in this particular county, but also in all eight counties that Community and Family Resources does target, at least eight of the 10 that we typically target. So this is free. What I have provided the Board of Supervisors is leaflets that explains mental health first aid training in a little bit more detail. I've provided my business card as well as a schedule of trainings that are already scheduled and can be registered. If anybody else wants more information, I do have extra copies and can answer any questions afterward.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions, Todd?
No.
Okay.
I do appreciate it.
Is there anybody else who wishes to address the board? Okay. If not, then we will move on to our next reports. Chuck Long is here with Iowa Sports Foundation Annual Report.
Thank you, Linda. Thank you, Linda, and Laura, wish you all the best in everything you're doing and trying to get healthy. And I, under the Iowa Sports Foundation, we have five major pillars, and one of them is Live Healthy Iowa. We have some wonderful programs in that, in that pillar. So if you're interested in talking about those with me, I'd be more than happy to talk to you about it. But they're really some nice programs. I'm here to talk about our other pillar, Iowa Games, and we are now entering our 32nd year of Summer Games. Many of you in this room probably know who we are, and we're excited and ramping up for that. It takes a lot of planning. I'm here to present a plaque to the board. You, as a board, Story County Board, have been behind us for a long time and been a great supporter of ours. And as you know, we put a lot of dollars in the community. We have incorporated corporate games, Des Moines Corporate Games now, which stretches all the way from Ames to Des Moines. We have 75 companies along this corridor involved with that. And it's added about 12,000 more participants to our already 13,000 for our Summer Games. So we're exploding, and we had to hire somebody else to be able to handle it. But we are exploding right now with the corporate games along with the Summer Games, and so we have a big summer ahead. But just want to thank the board for your support over all these years that you've been behind us, and we hope that will continue. And I have a plaque for you all.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments?
Just so appreciative of everything that the Sports Foundation, particularly with the Iowa Games, brings to our community and what it does for the state of Iowa. So thank you, Chuck.
Yes, it's been a great partnership. Thank you.
I just want to point out, this is not black and gold. I started to wear my Iowa.
I noticed that, too.
The next item is consideration of proclamation making April 13th, 2019, as Bev Crumple Making Democracy Work Day, presented by the League of Women Voters of Ames and Story County. So I will, it's my pleasure to read this proclamation for us. Whereas the Story County Board of Supervisors are dedicated to safeguarding democracy and creating positive growth and good public policy, and whereas the local county government needs everyone to participate in order for Story County to be a strong, safe, diverse, and democratic place to live, and whereas the League of Women Voters has created an award to recognize community leaders who are safeguarding democracy and social justice in our country, and whereas the Making Democracy Work Award is a chance to honor and celebrate members of our community who express a passion for democracy, and whereas the League of Women Voters has selected Bev Crumple for the 2019 Making Democracy Work Award, and whereas Bev Crumple has quietly volunteered for several decades in nonprofit organizations through civic involvement, public service, and advocacy for voting rights, especially for disenfranchised and forgotten individuals. And whereas Bev Crumple has registered, helped the League of Women Voters register and educate well over 1,000 new voters, assisted women in becoming more involved in democracy through Women at the Well, and for nine years served as an appointed member to the Story County Conservation Board. My goodness. Compensation. Compensation. I am sorry. Thank you for the correction. Story County Compensation Board. Therefore, we, Story County Board of Supervisors, do hereby proclaim Saturday, April 13th, as Bev Crumple Making Democracy Work Day, and encourage all our citizens to do their part to safeguard democracy and to participate in making democracy work today and every day. Signed this ninth day of April, 2019. Do we need a motion?
We do. And I'll move the proclamation and think it's so appropriate, Bev Crumple Making Democracy Work Day, because that's exactly what Bev does. Thanks, Bev.
Okay. Moved and seconded. Sanders?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Proclamation is adopted. And Bev, would you join us up here?
Is that one of them? One of the last? Black, yellow?
It's also a good day.
What are you going to say?
It's also our pleasure today to present a plaque to Yvonne Fitzgerald in recognition of six years of volunteer service representing Story County on asset. Yvonne is a wonderful community volunteer, so this is our day to appreciate volunteerism in our community. Yvonne, would you like to step up?
Well, I will turn my asset.
You're the first volunteer who's done that.
Congratulations.
Good job.
Over the box. You should have kept it.
Okay, next on the agenda is discussion and consideration of assets. Recommendation for Community and Family Resources requested funding for fiscal year 2020 for $7,200. And we have Dev Shuldrick, Michelle De La Riva, and Shelley Zabel to present. And when you do speak, you need to speak very directly into the microphone here.
The ones on the table work.
Oh, they do now?
Yeah.
Oh, the one on the table is working. It's just the other one using it.
Thank you, thank you.
Good morning, Board. We are back here today as a result of a conversation that Community and Family Resources had with the Story County Board of Supervisors in January about a request for $7,200 for fiscal year 20 for services. And the board at that time had referred it to Asset to review. And Asset's recommendation, after meeting with Shelley and Michelle, is to decline honoring that request at this point in time. In talking with Shelley and Michelle, we learned that as part of getting the Department of Public Health grant, one of the things that they'll be doing is a community assessment of needs, and we really feel that that is important to go through that process first to determine what the needs are in Story County, and then come back to request those funds. The other thing that Asset is suggesting to CFR is to consider applying to become an asset agency. If dollars are going to be requested on an ongoing basis, that would be the best way to do that. And so I provided Michelle with deadlines and the application and those kinds of things to consider applying for Asset, that would be for fiscal year 21. And the other thing that was recommended was to work with the Story County Quality of Life Alliance. That group is responsible for pulling together the community-wide assessment every five years, and so Les White with Mary Greeley Public Health Services leads that group. And they're starting the planning steps for the assessment to happen in 2020. So that information's been provided to Michelle as well to reach out to Les and see how we can coordinate those efforts. And I'll turn it over if Michelle or Shelley have anything further to add.
I think that it's, one of the things just for the public to be aware of is the Integrated Provider Network was awarded in January. And what it did this time with the Iowa Department of Public Health, RFP, is it integrated all of the treatment and prevention services. So CFR is now the holder of our sliding fee scale for gambling treatment as well as substance use treatment. We also provide comprehensive prevention services as well as gambling prevention services. So those comprehensive prevention services offer a wide array of different types of prevention, including school-based prevention, workforce prevention, gambling prevention. So we can certainly come out on all of those different types of programs and offer that free to the public. So again, as we are doing our community needs assessment, if there's folks that are interested and meeting with our team, talk a little bit about that. We are more than open and welcome.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Shelley, did you have anything else to add?
No, just that we're available and we're staffed to provide those prevention services.
Okay. Laura, do you have a question?
Yes. Well, it's not question, yeah, we'll start with a question. So this needs assessment, is that going to take into account what YSS may be providing right now using asset dollars? And any comparisons between what we now could get for free and ship those asset dollars somewhere else?
I think that the asset board would be the one that would have to really evaluate that, I think, because YSS offers, certainly offered the comprehensive prevention contract. So my guess is that especially in this upcoming contract year, there will be some overlap of services that we can be providing for your charge. But with the change, it may be just one of those things that Asset is wanting to continue with that funding? I can't speak for that board.
Well, absolutely. Michelle and I are going to get together later today and update her on a couple conversations yesterday related to that. But that is how I'm looking at this going forward, is that if there are, in fact, duplicate services being offered through Asset, which it's starting to sound like there may be some and some are separate, then all, every asset funder is going to have to probably make a decision about those funds. So moving forward, but I think it's great that you guys now in understanding the needs assessment coming out, but are willing to.
I think it's a very interesting process, and hopefully it'll help us to really dive into Story County and what the needs are here. I also did want to say our treatment sliding fee scale is for all ages. So we are licensed to provide for children services as well. It's not something we had provided in the past, mostly just because YSS, we were subcontracted with them. But if there are young people that need substance use treatment, they certainly can still come and report and provide that service if they have staff for their treatment.
Any questions?
All set. Thank you.
Okay. Do we need a motion? I think, yeah.
I recommend that we delay, is that the wording you want, delay or what is that? Deny, decline at this time. Recommend that we decline at this time the funding for fiscal year 2020 and the amount of $7,200 until the needs assessment is done.
Second.
Further discussion? Olson?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Next, we have Erica Peterson, Chief Executive Officer of Boys and Girls Club of Story County. Give her on your report.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So I'm really pleased to be here on this particular morning where we're recognizing volunteerism and service, and also through Asset and so on, because one of our pillars at the club is character and citizenship development. And so really, that importance of giving back to our community and being involved is of utmost importance for what we emphasize with our kiddos. So, and I want to thank you all very much for your continuous support of the Boys and Girls Clubs of Story County over many, many, many years. And so I've been with the club now for five years, and I know the support was coming long before that. And I also want to thank you for the increased support this upcoming fiscal year 20 and adding our new Nevada club into that mix. And so we're very thrilled to be able to have a second site where we're able to serve youth who need us the most within the county. As you can see from the report that I sent out, we're able to, through the support of the county as well as many other supporters, we're able to support nearly 1,700 youth through both our membership-based programs as well as our outreach programs. And so we're really thrilled to be able to partner with other organizations to be able to do the best for kids within our community. So I think those were the primary things that I wanted to highlight, was to really say a big thank you, to tell you that we're growing. And, you know, we're still facing the same challenge of not having enough space, running out of space at our Ames club site, so our board is working diligently on some direction with that so that we can see how we can enable to serve, enable our organization to serve more youth as the demand increases. So also, just, I wanted to leave behind, I had shared with you our spring newsletter via email, but I brought you a color copy, so you can have a nice folded color copy instead of just the PDF on that one. Just highlight some of the, some of the great activities and programs that we're offering within the club. And also just a little plug, KHOI Radio has picked up on our Nevada Kids Club news broadcast, and the kids will be broadcasting live regularly now on the radio. And so it's just been a really, really amazing opportunity for these youth to discover their voice and to be able to share that, not just within the club, but now starting to reach out and share that within the community. And so that is made possible because of your support. So we just want to thank you very much. Any questions?
Thank you. Thank you for everything you do for the youth of our community.
I am interested, as I've seen in the last couple of years, that your outreach and marketing plan has changed and the bright color, the bright colors. Yeah, I think it was maybe six months ago, I don't know my time, we received a lovely little booklet in the mail. So I was just wondering about, do the children participate in that in any way in helping pull that information together, those images, or is that an adult?
That's, I very much appreciate the question, and thank you for noticing. Yes, we have, as part of our strategic plan, it's to broaden our market across the county to really help to build awareness of both the need as well as how the club is able to address the need. As far as the kids' participation? No. That is definitely, and the images that you're seeing, actually, the design of the booklet that you made reference to was done and sponsored by Sigler. And so the concept came from a member within my team who said, you know, golden books, as children, we all loved our golden books, right? And so what a great way to capture the idea of loving and living our childhood and to be able to do it fully, which is what we're trying to do here at the club. And so, so as much as I would like to say yes, in this particular case, it was capturing the, what we see with the children, what they're able to experience at the club, and then putting it into a format by professional designers.
I liked it.
Great. Thank you. Thank you.
I do have one question. I see that the Nevada site, the average daily attendance has been nine, and I know it takes a while to build up, you know, in a community that people are aware of programs, and I wonder if you had any thoughts about what your attendance will look like over the summer, what you're going to be able to offer there, and how you're marketing that, how you're getting that information out?
You bet. So I'm going to answer that in a twofold question. So the average daily attendance of nine was for the calendar year 2018. So in January of 2018, we had an in-school program where we were seeing an average of two kids a day, and that's the one that we decided to put a pause on and then regroup, and then we were able to open the club at a different location. So if we look at the school year average, our attendance is 12, and so still not a huge number. We have 27 who are currently registered with 12 that we're, that we're currently serving. As far as summer, we are projecting to have 50 members registered and ideally a daily attendance of 20 to 25 as we continue to grow. This is a middle school-only program, so incoming fourth graders through eighth grade. So it's a narrower population, but what we know is that life starts to get real in middle school. That's when you're starting to make some more independent decisions, and some of those decisions can affect the trajectory of your life. So we know that by being a safe place with positive adult role models can add that extra layer of guidance and direction in the lives of the children, obviously in partnership with the schools and the families and the community as well. So just to help hopefully put that into perspective on that one. So this will be, and this summer will be the first time the club actually operates through the summer. In the past, we were only school year, and we were located in a classroom at the school. But now that we have a site at Central Presbyterian Church, they've allowed us to use their youth space at all, at all times, we'll be able to have a full-day club experience for youth. And so I think it's going to continue to have that trajectory. We're working very closely with the schools as far as recruitment for the summer, and I think we're making some headway there.
Okay.
Thank you for that question. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Any other questions from anybody?
No.
Well, thank you so much for being here.
Thank you.
Great report. Okay. Next, excuse me, will I catch up and turn a page here? Oh, don't turn a page. Consideration of minutes, the minutes from the April 2nd meeting, is there a motion to approve?
Yeah, I move approval of April 2nd's meeting.
Is there a second?
I think.
Okay. Any discussion?
None.
Sanders?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Minutes are approved. Next, personnel actions in, go ahead.
I move the asset.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Olson, second by Sanders. Any discussion? Okay, then. Olson?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Personnel actions approved. Now we have a very long consent agenda. We have 19 items, so do we need to pull any of those for discussion?
I don't need to pull any.
Okay, then. Is there a motion to approve them?
I would move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Okay. There's a motion and a second. Olson?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
Consent agenda items are approved. So then we will move on to item 12, public hearing items. We have no public hearing items for today, so we'll go to additional items. Lisa Markley will address the consideration of city budget amendment notice for publication. Good morning.
I've been telling you, we're going to amend budget. Hopefully this is the last time we're going to do it for the fiscal year.
No way.
Yes, it is. We'll see how good my salary calculations are as to whether that's going to happen or not. But at, at this point, I'm requesting that we send to publication this budget amendment request. I want to public it, publicate, publish it on 4/18. I can't speak today. And the public hearing will be then April 30th. Lyndon and I talked earlier and I told her that we have until May 30th to technically amend budgets because we have to give 30 days for appeals if necessary. This budget amendment, the highlighted areas in your documentation mean that those, those requests were from the departments. The majority of those items were items that you had talked about, that you had approved, that you have done throughout the fiscal year since the last amendment. There is a large item in conservation I want to make a real quick note on and that's the 542,000 that they want to, for part of Iowa Nature Trail. Part of that, 500,000 comes back as a reimbursement, but it's not going to come back till next year, next fiscal year because of the fact that, you know, that we have to reimburse on it. So it's a large one and I just wanted to make sure I told you about that. Overall, the general fund, we're going to use about $1.1 million of our ending fund balance. Of that, about 589,000 is actually after the reimbursement from conservation. So that's a large amount of money. I do want to let you know that, that the assigned funds that are still, no, excuse me, in the fund balance, there's assigned funds in the amount of one, or 2.2 million dollars for numerous different things, justice centers, small communities, future project, future capital projects. And in the committed funds, if you remember correctly, you did a resolution, the board did a resolution a few years ago to commit 1.6 million from the Dakota Access. Some of those dollars are being spent in this amendment also. But at the end of fiscal year 19, there'll still be 1.3, almost 1.4 million in that. So it's not getting spent real fast, just as a side note. So.
Those are the funds that conservation was letting basically use to say how they would like to see that being spent.
Correct. They put in a request to the board of supervisors for some, certain things that they would like to use those dollars for. So, so the process is I send this to publication if it's, if you guys are okay with that. And then on April 30th, we have the public hearing. This works the same as the actual budget. You can lower at the public hearing, but you cannot raise the expenses. Okay? Any other questions for me?
Okay, so if there are no other questions, I would entertain a motion to approve sending the budget amendment notice for publication.
So moved.
Okay. Any discussion? Sanders?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Thank you very much. Good job. So next, we are going to hear from Darren Moon about a discussion and direction of potential agreement for interchange improvements at Cameron School Road and George Washington Carver.
Good morning.
Okay. After talking with Laura, we decided our first step in this, I'd go over and talk with city staff just to kind of get a general direction on where to proceed with this process. The city did agree, this is a bit unique. We've never done a negotiation that included three parties like this where the developers involved in negotiations. So they didn't have a clear path on how we should move forward either, but we have some information I could share and then we can kind of decide how we'd like to move forward. Here's the intersection we're talking about, Cameron School Road, GW Carver. I think the first thing we need to decide if the county has a big preference on whether we'd like to see a roundabout or stoplights at this intersection at some point. There's benefits to both. Traffic signals, it's going to be a little bit easier to build. The roundabout where we require a lot of traffic rerouting while they build it and a lot of staging. Signals, a little easier for winter maintenance when you have straight through right angle intersections. Roundabouts, a little bit harder to plow snow on. And you have to keep them treated more because it's a turning movement. So when it gets icy, you need to make sure it's treated so you don't slide off the side the whole time. Signals are a little more bike and pedestrian friendly. The roundabouts, you have to really take the bike and pet traffic all the way around the roundabout and get outside of it. So it's a little more difficult to handle bike and pet traffic. The benefits to the roundabout is the flow is a little bit better through there and most of the time you don't have to even stop when you pull up to it. Accidents would be less severe. You can get some right angle, high-speed intersection accidents with traffic signals where you don't get that with the roundabout. Speeds are less. One of our goals is to kind of reduce the speed through this area. It's getting a little congested. So to reduce the speeds through this whole area would be kind of a goal in my mind, be nice to do. With stoplights, you can, might still have 55 mile an hour traffic going through there on green lights. And lastly, a roundabout takes more land area to build. So that's a concern is it's starting already to get tight. So if we're going to do a roundabout, we, we need to get ahead of it as soon as we can. So I don't know if there's any preferences from the board up front that, at this point, the city, they plan to annex this corner down here for the free direct development. They're kind of taking the approach that this is the only area they can control anything on at this point. They can, at this point, it sounds like they're going to require the developer to put three lanes through here adjacent to both sides of their development. What that would do would be allow turn lanes. They're not real clear if they're going to require the lights of the developer at this point. I think they would because the traffic study says it warrants it under build-out conditions of this lot. But at this point, the city's kind of saying, we can require those lanes to be built adjacent to the property because that'll be in the city, but the rest will take some sort of action by the county. If, if we want roundabouts or signals, we're going to have to indicate that now and work with. I think their view is we probably work with the developer to figure that out because I don't think the city would have any money in this. It would be developer designed and paid for. So cities like, at this point, we have no monetary interest in that. So it's really between us and the developer. We were hoping to negotiate with just the city since the developer is, it's a city development, not a county development. But I'm not sure that's going to be possible.
Darren, I have a question about the corner. It's my understanding that Mr. Friedrich wants to put a convenience note there so there'd be a couple of convenience style businesses running run out.
Yeah, right here.
My question then is, how does a roundabout work if you've also got a vis, you know, got that little mini strip all there? Do they, do they go in separately before the roundabout really gets, you're going up to it?
I'm pretty sure. We didn't get into that much detail, but yeah, I'm sure they have to bring them off further to the west over here to get them into that. It'd be hard to bring them off in the roundabout, I believe.
I did look at the traffic study the city did and they're, they have various access points. I think one is going to be kind of across from where the church that back driveway is and there was one on Carver that was down a ways from Cameron. Yeah. So I, I'm not an engineer, but what I looked at, it didn't look like was right at that corner they were wanting any access. It was going to be a ways away both ways.
And I think at this point, the city's assuming traffic lights, just as an initial assumption, because the turn lanes would indicate, the long turn lanes would indicate a right angle intersection with traffic signals. If you went the roundabout option, that might not be necessary. So that's how they're going to move forward with the developer unless they hear something different from the county indicating we'd like to see a roundabout or if we want to participate in the signals. Cost-wise, between the two options, there's not a huge difference between the two. Both options, you're probably looking $600,000 to $700,000. The roundabout's probably a little bit more based on past cost. So I'd, I'd estimate 600 for the lights and turn lanes and probably 700 for the roundabout. But that's really dependent on what the land's going to cost us. But where the roundabouts get expensive, it's a lot of handwork and a lot of labor because all, it's all circular so they can't run their normal pavers through it. It's all handwork.
Could you repeat those estimates? How much a roundabout would cost versus traffic lights?
We estimate the traffic lights to be about 600,000 and maybe up to 700 for a roundabout.
Okay.
Those are pretty general numbers at this point.
So a couple of questions. Is anybody thinking ahead to when STAN comes all the way through and attaches right there? And what impact that has and does that change the benefit of a light versus roundabout? And two, have we talked at all about whose responsibility it's going to become to maintain that corner, understanding that part of it will be in the city of Ames and part of it will be in the county? That would have an impact as well, in my mind.
The city has mentioned, yeah, when this STAN does come up, these were the intersections that were in the traffic study and this would be STAN coming up at some point. Right now, they've, the iron's built half of the road through here, so it's built off the center line north. It's where the, it's paved at this point. So when STAN comes up, they pave the south half of that lane so it'll line up better with the entire intersection. That's all dependent on this, it's Borgmeyer property and when they'd be willing to come into the city and that, I really didn't get any guide from the city on how soon that could possibly happen. So that's kind of why at this point, the city's just looking at this alone and, and bringing around, whether, they didn't show any preference roundabout lights. They, they thought both would work fine. But when you put a roundabout here, what you've got to keep in mind is, once you go with a roundabout, you kind of go, got to go with roundabouts around it. It doesn't work well to mix lights and roundabouts next to each other. So this proposed intersection is not too far south. That would have to be probably roundabout if we went roundabout there or lights and lights.
Is that Weston, the number 12?
12?
No, that's, that's a non-existing road.
Doesn't exist now.
Okay, 13 is then.
No. 13's a non-existing road.
Oh, that's our board one. 4 as well, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's, I believe that's Weston.
Okay. What were they, what did the Ames study recommend for that one? Do you remember?
For which one?
4.
Number 4? I do not recall what it recommends down there at this time.
I didn't bring that last night. Okay.
But the study for this intersection alone, no build out, even out to 2034, it did not require the lights at this point. But if this goes, of course it did. So they, the recommendation is to get ahead of it and do either lights or roundabouts at this time.
So I think speed in that whole corridor, and I'm not only including George or Carver, I'm including 190th up there, we've got to do something, or I believe we've got to do something with an eye toward the speeds in that corridor. It's getting worse and worse. It's a, it's a route that bicyclists, I see Treasure Rasmussen in the, in the audience, bicyclists love to take. So I think, to me, it sounds simpler to just go in and, and recommend that we put in traffic signals. But I don't think that does for us, Darren, and just talk me through it. I don't think that helps us with the speed. In, in some cases, it might even increase speed as people try to make sure they get through, get through a light. And so that's my primary concern as I think about this.
I agree and I, I'm a fan of roundabouts and I think it would accomplish our goal of slowing traffic down through that whole corridor. And I, the city didn't seem to have a problem with that, but they kind of pushed that off saying that's going to have to be a county decision at this point in time. And then they'd probably go from there. But as you can see in the traffic study, the level of service over here on the right, A is the best and it goes down to F. If they went with a light option, you get a C and a D level of service and you can see it's a little bit better traffic flow with the roundabout options. You get level of service B. So traffic flow would be better and it accomplished the goal of slowing traffic down on both sides. So that, that would be my preference at this point.
And, and, and I'm sorry, Laura.
It's okay.
And if what you're saying is, is true that, that once we pick one option, that in essence picks the other options.
Right.
This one is really, really important, even if, in my mind, even if it means spending a little more money now to put, if a roundabout is the right thing. Spend a little more money now, put that in and then you've established what that corridor is going to look like over the next 30 or 40 years.
I, I too have the preference, no, I can't believe I'm saying I have a preference for a roundabout, given my former comments about driving through them. But I too believe that the speed element is not going to really be fixed. And as we look at continued growth up there, residential growth, we're looking at, at the continuation of more and more traffic getting drunk in there. Therefore, the speeds becoming more and more of a problem. So I'd rather take a look at maybe discussing doing the roundabout.
The other issue with the roundabout is we, in our meeting, we kind of laid out just a rough, just to see if it even fit. We're not 100% sure the roundabout would even fit at this point due to the tightness of the irons. This lot here is not purchased at, I don't believe. But if we wanted to avoid that, getting into that lot at all, it would be shifted over a little bit. And we believe we could get it to fit based on some rough numbers, but it could come back, but you know, it just won't work. But, so that'd be the next discussion. If we go down that route, who's going to design it? Who's going to pay for the designer? I believe Fox Engineering's doing the free direct development and he, I think he indicated he does roundabout design, but Shai Hattery that did the traffic study, they're kind of the experts in that. You, you do want an expert when you do a roundabout design. There's a lot of variables that go into it.
And my comment would be, it's, it's really too bad that we weren't here having this discussion about this intersection and direction on it a couple of years ago. Because I think it would have made it easier if it had been done in conjunction with the irons. But if there's room to move it, I am very much in favor of a roundabout there. I would like to add one other thing though, and it is in terms of looking forward and remembering what we were a couple of years ago. When you go up a little further, could you put that other slide up? Because I have looked at this and intersection one, the Carver and 190th. And I just want to say for the record here, the traffic study shows that as a left turn lane.
Yes.
I happen to know how much the elevation drops as you go north, immediately north of that intersection. The reason I know is because I drive it daily. And it causes visibility problems. You cannot sometimes see a car coming south there if you're sitting there. My concern is you put a, is if the only thing that's done to that intersection is putting a left lane there, you're going to end up with twice as many cars in the intersection when the next accident happens. I, I think, I like roundabouts. I think if we're looking at roundabouts along there, I think a roundabout could do a much better job of preventing further accidents there than a left turn lane could. That's my non-engineer opinion about that one. So I'm saying it now because I know it's in there for 2040, but maybe we should start thinking about as a left turn lane, the best, the best option there with all the, all the traffic that's going along that corner.
I have a question following up on that and I'm looking also to Treasure Rasmussen because we know he's an avid biker, okay? And also, but Darren, so from a bicyclist standpoint and a safety, is a roundabout better than a traffic light? Yes, I see a nod from the back.
Typically, you don't run the bikes through the roundabout. You have to build it all the way around to avoid the conflict points. But I'm sure it's still a public roadway that bikes could use if they wanted to. But you wouldn't put the bike pass through that. You'd have to take the bike pass. If you built a bike pass, they'd be all the way around.
Way out around, like another bow.
And the reality is you shouldn't bike pass there.
University South, those three roundabouts have a bike pass. If you want to drive through there and look at that.
I know there's not a bike path there, so I was thinking more about on-the-road travel and with the, a brewery out there. And with the, a brewery out there and the winery out there, I'm thinking more about people traveling and as growth continues in there. So that's why I just kind of asked about that for the future.
Sure.
Really looking at nine, you know, item nine, which is, is where we've got the Hyde Avenue, 190th issue, where we put up stop signs for an entire, what, hour?
Yeah.
Two hours before, yeah, we pulled that stuff.
Do you think there should be room for a roundabout on nine?
That one we discussed as well, and that's gonna be even a tougher, it really falls off to the west of that intersection on both sides. And the property owner's pretty tight on the northeast corner as well. Think it's possible. It's gonna take some creative earthwork out there to build it up, but it, it's still possible at this point.
Well, I think with the village co-op going in there, and as close as they've built that to the road and as many windows as they have that are facing right onto that, I bet the residents there, if there was room, who are gonna be there, would prefer a roundabout to traffic signals. But that doesn't mean it can happen.
And the study did not recommend, or didn't show a warrant for lights or roundabout, even through the buildout conditions down here. But it's still recommended we look at. It, it's got a peak hour issue is what it does. It's just got those.
Yeah, there's 15 minutes a day that you don't wanna be at the intersection.
Yes.
So what I'm hearing, your question about the preference for a traffic light or roundabout at Cameron and Carver's, I'm hearing roundabout. Is that correct?
Correct.
Board?
So, so I, I agree. I think, I think we should explore, fully explore a roundabout until we find out that it's not feasible, as Darren indicated. We might find out it's not feasible.
Now, how do we get there? That's gonna be an interesting discussion because do we have the developer start working to design that? And are we gonna be involved in the funding of that design? Because even if the city just went straight with the turn lanes, this could still stay a stop sign. They'd have three lanes here, so the county would start to be involved because, unless they didn't use that third lane for a while. Because we'd have to build a third lane to the north to match up with the third lane at the south side. So county's gonna be involved, whether we like it or not in this. So that's kinda the message the city had. They were very accommodating, good to work with, but that's their take right now is they're only dealing with what's in the city, and three quarters of this is still county. So we.
There's an annexation agreement on the irons?
There, there was no traffic impact, if that's what you're saying, when irons went in and they weren't required to build anything else out other than paving up to G M B Carver.
So you're saying that it is our responsibility? The City of Ames is gonna sit this one out. They're gonna, they wanna make sure that they at a minimum have turn lanes, but they would be comfortable with whatever the county negotiates with the developer if it involved more than just, as long as it involves at least the turn lanes that they want, they're gonna be fine with it. They're not putting any skin in the game. They're not gonna spend a whole lot of time worrying about this. Is that, is that accurate?
That was their message, and they typically do not spend money outside of the state's limits on city money. So that, they're kinda gonna sit it out. But if, if we wanna sit down and talk to them about this is what, what it should look like and move forward, and they didn't really offer up that they'd fund any of that at this point, but if they wanna be involved in those discussions at least.
And I see Jerry Moore, our Director of Planning, in the, in the audience. So maybe this one may be directed toward him. But when the City of Ames tried to annex, they included the Borgmeyer property, which is the field on the lower right-hand side of the screen.
Never has, never has included the Borgmeyer property.
It never had.
Took coming.
It was just irons. Was that, I'm asking that?
So you're, you're conflating, so the City of Ames tried to annex further east from there and do a little flagpole annexation over, but the irons and Borgmeyer, I don't think has ever been part of an annexation agreement. There's been conversations that the irons needed to build to city spec so they could be annexed.
Let's let Jerry explain his gist.
Yeah, I didn't know was before the Board of Supervisors was the actual land use designation change. And that included the Free Direct property, the Borgmeyer property, the irons and the golf course. And then it also included, I think, four or five single-family acreages. And again, it was just whether or not the designation should be approved, and that's something that the Board of Supervisors approved. But the City of Gilbert did not support the full designation change. That's the only supported area that's on the left side, which includes the Free Direct.
Thank you. So from moving forward and looking about, you know, who absorbs costs or do we shift costs at some point as an option? Knowing that we're likely, that there's likely to be an attempt from the City of Ames going forward to try and annex property up in this area. And then, correct on that? And so, yeah, so, so I'm, I'm a little hesitant that, I guess we have to look at, I'm hesitant to look at one scenario. I think we need to look at two. What happens if we retain the control of this intersection in essence for 10 years? Or what happens if three years down the road already, the city is coming in and trying to annex? Because we'll be expending tax dollars to do this.
I think it deserves a little bit more conversation in terms of the financial aspects.
Yeah. That's the big unknown in my mind, is how soon is the rest gonna be brought in? I have no idea.
The city has agreements with the golf course property, but I don't know that they have an agreement with the board.
What is the agreement specifically? Or can you explain that?
Has to do with when the city's ready to annex the property. They have to be receptive to it, and then there's language about extension utilities.
And there's something about septic systems and going on city? Okay, that's what I was remembering.
It's all onsite septic.
At, at their cost, at the homeowner's cost, and they will not oppose annexation. That's what's agreed to out there.
Thank you for taking us back.
So I think, so I would, I'd just say a couple of things. I think absolutely we ought to be running multiple scenarios on this, and we always ought to recognize the reality that property can and, and does move into city limits. The reality as far as tax impacts, though, to, to the county is, you're not talking about it's that great, Lawrence. You're talking about us losing our $3.20 in the rural levy, but we generally pick that up in terms of valuation because what we're collecting off the Borgmeyer farm right now is gonna look entirely different than what we're collecting when it looks like Northridge Heights out there.
Correct.
Where we're, you know, by a magnitude of 1,000, in terms of property taxes. Second thing I would say is, this intersection is a problem today. I think Linda was correct in pointing out, it would've been great if we would've had the foresight five or six years ago to take a look at this intersection and project what the realities were gonna be, not only in Story County, but in Boone County, where this is used as a major access point to the county. We didn't. So we're stuck with where we are right now. We control 75, or will control 75% of this intersection. I think that gives us a lion's share of the control. What, what I would suggest moving forward is, I would ask that Linda work with Darren and Deb to, to visit with the developer and see what we can put together. And then options would come back to the board.
Should be included, city, someone from the city in that discussion.
At some point. I don't know if it'd have to be at the initial meeting. Just, the other aspect is timing. I think, I think they'd like to get the annexation done in two to three months. And the developer agreement between the city and the developer needs, I think, to be done by that point. So the city needs to know, does the county wanna push in this direction? And then we can change the developer agreement accordingly. So that, that's the timing aspect of it.
Let's try to get together later today and make a plan so we can get moving on it.
Okay.
And I just, on the impact tech of the taxes, yes, I understand that in the long run, this is a, is a dollar positive for us. I was thinking more about taxes from a precedent standpoint, because you made the point, Rick, already about we're going further, you know, we're gonna run into more of these situations with annexation, with roads buddying up, I mean, to each other from the county and city. So please, as you have that discussion.
And I think that's a great, a great point, Darren. I'd just ask you, so I can't think of a time that the county has ever negotiated directly with a, with a developer to do something like this. So I think we are precedent-setting, and I think how we, how we approach that is gonna be vital. I think it's the reason that the conversation that Linda's gonna be part of is so vital to how we move forward and what our direction's gonna be. And all I would ask us to keep sight of is, doing nothing is not an option, right? This intersection demands that we do something, and we can, how we do that is, is the interesting conversation.
I think it'd be also interesting to get some input from some people who drive that daily. Because they, they know, you know, a lot more about that intersection than even I do because I don't go that far south every day. But I know some people who've contacted me and are just very concerned about, and a lot of what I hear is the speed. Somebody trying to turn off on her driveway, and she's got somebody right on the tail of her car and has to pull over to the shoulder to let them go.
Yeah, I would say.
Because they won't even notice that she's got her turn signal on.
That one is a huge deal, the speed through there. But trying to turn north off of Cameron School Road onto George Ocean Carver, which we have a lot of people headed to the Gilbert School System every day who have to turn, especially since we closed the bridge on 190th. We've got a lot of people who have to turn north right there, and that, that can back up a long way.
I think people get impatient when that happens. I've seen that, so, okay.
And the church is a big player in this because mostly on Sundays, but.
Yeah.
Big traffic generator. And also, if we're gonna do anything out there, we're gonna need some additional land, so we're gonna see how receptive they are to that.
So Jerry, would you wanna be involved in this as well? Do you see yourself having a role here?
That'd be probably a good idea.
Okay. So let's, after this meeting, get together and figure out our calendars, and we can all get together, just figure some things out.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else? Any other questions, Darren or Jerry, while we've got you here on this topic?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on then. Consideration of purchase for a 2019 Toyota RAV4 hybrid from Wilson Toyota for $27,477. Good price.
Okay. Yeah, that's right. Good morning, Mike.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This is a normal replacement of one of our fleet vehicles. This item was requested in the 20 budget, FY20 budget, and at your direction, we moved this back into FY20.
19.
Or in FY19.
Yeah, sure.
Making. So we do have two good quotes on it, and we're asking to move forward with it. We purchase that vehicle this, this year and purchase it with the local order, which is Wilson Toyota. Conservation Board did support this request.
Okay, any questions, board?
I'd move approval of the purchase.
I second.
Okay. Sanders?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Approved. Anything else? You got it. Thank you very much.
He's next.
You're next.
Yes, by furnace too.
That's right. Okay, furnace and heat pump for conservation.
So we had, let's see, a week ago, had a, two weeks ago, had a furnace at one of our residences quit. It's a 20-plus-year-old furnace, and the core went out of it. Could have spent some money to replace it, however, or tried to repair it, however, from a cost-benefit analysis on a system that old, it just didn't make a lot of sense. That residence is actively occupied, and we have in our procurement policy and emergency procurement provision, to do that, we exercised that provision, moved forward with this purchase, approved by, or with consultation by the Chair of the Conservation Board and by one of the supervisors here. So we moved forward with that, and now we're just asking for your official blessing with this purchase.
Yeah, and that was me as ex-officio member of the Conservation Board.
Any questions?
Not for me.
Yeah, so I'd move approval.
Second.
Okay. Sanders?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
And approved. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Hope he enjoys his warm. Hopefully, you won't need it too much until the fall again, right?
Next, we'll hear from Emily Zan and Jerry Moore about the natural resource area layer for Franklin Township.
Good morning.
Good morning. While Emily's cumin up the presentation, this item comes from the C2C plan. We were to work with Story County Conservation and designate natural resource areas on our land use map. We were to match up the layer with the actual field conditions. Time and time again, we would use this layer. It's not really reflective of the actual conditions with the resources that are in the field or on, on properties. So the goal is to do a better job of matching up the resources. And so what's before you today is the approach of the method that we're using to put together this information. Right now, the layer includes seven different aspects, and Emily will go through each one of those with you. We did take this to the Planning and Development Commission on the 6th of February and the 6th of March, and they provided some great feedback to us. They wanted additional information on where the resources were derived from, and they think it's very important that we put this information out on the website, Planning and Development's website, to show the different components that make up the overall layer. So that's something that we're gonna do. And then ultimately, we started this approach with just trying to use the Franklin Township as a template, and then we wanna build on that and apply that to all the townships in the county. So our intention is to, when we get this completed, to go to the Planning and Development Commission for a recommendation to bring to the Board of Supervisors to adopt the whole project.
Okay, so I'm just gonna talk through the primary considerations for the layers that we included in the natural resource, the proposed natural resource area layer. Again, as Jerry said, we, Planning and Development staff and Conservation staff worked together to determine the following layers. And a lot of these came from the watershed assessment that was previously done by Story County Conservation. So the natural resource area layer includes, the proposed natural resource area layer includes the Story County Conservation survey, survey priority sites. These are sensitive areas that were identified from the watershed assessment completed by EOR. As you know, FEMA is currently in the process of updating their flood maps. So we use the proposed flood maps, which have an anticipated adoption date of fall 2020. The existing lakes and wetlands of the, in Story County, which were also from the watershed assessment. The stream buffers recommended by the watershed assessment. And then the priority restorable wetlands also identified in the watershed assessment. So this comes from the comprehensive plan goals, which, a land use goal two, was to preserve, protect, and plan around the physical characteristics of the land, including floodplains, steep slopes, wetlands, rich soils, and rare geological or environmental characteristics. And then the strag, strategy, strategy under that, sorry, is to designate natural resources, including the sensitive areas, as natural resource area on the future land use map. And as you'll kinda hear in just a minute, as new areas are inventoried, the future land use map can be amended accordingly. Then taking our, that goal into the implementation matrix, we have a goal at the bottom there is to preserve, protect, and plan around the physical characteristics of the land, including floodplains, steep slopes, wetlands, rich soils, and rare geological or environmental characteristics. And then the action step by P and D and Story County Conservation was to designate natural resource areas on the future land use map. So I'm gonna go through each one of these quickly. If you have any specific questions, I can try my best to answer them. The survey priority sites in Franklin Township, you can see are the, we have some medium around 500th and 160th, 170th, or 170th and 180th there. Also some high priority sites northeast of the City of Ames. And that, and that was also. sites northeast of the city of Ames. And that was also part of the implementation matrix that was completed, an action step that was completed by the Story County Conservation Board. So this is just looking at the entire county. Again, we did just focus on Franklin Township as Jerry stated, and this, more information on this survey can be found on the Story County Conservation website. Here are the proposed FEMA flood hazard maps in Franklin Township. The main difference between the proposed floodplain maps and the existing ones are that the proposed ones just provide more detail. So this is just a comparison of the flood hazard. The existing map is identified on the left-hand side of the screen, and then the proposed map is identified on the right-hand side there. They just got more, FEMA just acquired more accurate data, so we're seeing a lot of just more specific designation of the floodplain. Here's just another example of that. So we also use existing lakes and wetlands identified in the watershed plan, and that includes emergent wetlands, forested wetlands, lakes, ponds, riverines, and then scrub shrub wetlands. So the watershed assessment also recommended stream buffers, so those have been identified here for Franklin Township. The recommendation from the watershed assessment was that priority streams maintain a development buffer of 75 feet from the center of the stream, secondary streams 50 feet, and then other streams 25 feet. And then, in this specific case, for priority restorable wetlands, again identified by the watershed assessment, there wasn't any in the unincorporated area of Franklin Township, so this is a little bit of a, I guess, I wanted to point out that there is some, are some identified here in the city. There are others in different areas of the county, but none were identified in Franklin, the unincorporated area of Franklin Township outside of the Eighth Circuit Bridge. Priority restorable wetlands are identified as areas that are larger than five acres, and there are 32 total wetlands in Story County that meet that criteria. A lot of these wetlands have been converted to row crops, but again, they're priorities for restoration of the wetland in those areas.
And so how would something get designated there? Can you go back two slides?
Sure. So that was designated through the watershed assessment. It's really hard to see, I apologize, but there are quite a few modified and priority wetlands in the southwest corner of the county.
Yep.
It just so happens that in that area that we're looking at in Franklin Township, that was, there weren't any designated there.
And so, Mike, I'm curious about that. So I know you and I had a conversation about Squaw Creek and Cameron School Road, roughly that area, and a landowner who was interested in possibly restoring wetlands there and the value that that might be. I think as part of what we talked about with Dotson, there's the possibility of restoring some wetlands down on the low ground. So I'm just curious why when we, when we believe there's opportunities to restore some wetlands, why we wouldn't also incorporate those ideas into our maps as we move forward?
I think in my understanding is that watershed assessment identified just those that are larger than five acres, and I think a lot of, I think all of those that we're potentially looking at are less than five acres. The Dotson one would be less than five, and I think some of those others we chatted about are less than five. So not to say that those, in my mind, certainly aren't important, even if they are, but I think that's why they just don't rise to this level, is that they're slightly smaller and surface areas. But area went wild.
Yeah, I think we'll find too, that as we go through this process, the, those smaller, I guess, non-priority restorable wetlands are encompassed in a lot of the other areas that the sensitive areas inventory picked up on. Just these were just ones we pulled out specifically because of their size.
Absolutely, and all I would like to underscore, Emily, is I think it's completely appropriate to use our watershed assessment as the starting point, but let's not fall into the trap of using that as the gospel, that because it says this or it doesn't say this in the assessment, that that's where we're gonna be, because we're gonna find realities on the ground that are gonna look a little different than where that snapshot in time had us.
Right, of course. And that gets back to kind of the, and I'll get into this in just a second here, just what this designation really means for development and for surveying sensitive areas. So other considerations, aerial imagery we used from 2017, the soil survey, and then the USGS topographic maps. And this is just an example of one aerial imagery was used. This, as you can see, this area was not, this lake in the middle of the screen was not designated, and so we just went and filled that in. So that's just an example of where we use that. So this is the draft natural resource area layer for Franklin Township. I did want to show you just kind of a before and after image here. This is the existing one. You can see it's much more broken up and compartmentalized. Zoom, and then again, the draft, so our proposed layer does encompass more area. This is just a zoomed-in detail of what we're looking at. This is the existing layer. These are the input layers that we use. The red is that high priority for survey. The purple there is the floodplain, and then there's a stream that goes, that runs on the southwest, southeast corner of that, and then the floodplain buffer as well. I mean, sorry, the stream buffer as well.
Where is that?
The stream buffer?
No, where is this?
I'm sorry, this is in the northeast corner of Franklin Township. I can zoom out here. It's here.
Oh, okay.
Okay. I just wanted to show you kind of how the layers come together to create what we're proposing for the natural resource area layer. So what does this designation mean? So we are designating oftentimes more area through this update, but in general, development will be discouraged within the designated area unless additional measures are taken to preserve the natural resources found on the site. So this will involve, it's really just a heads-up as we're looking through our future land use map, that there's possibly some natural resources in this area, and a few additional steps should be taken to identify what those are and then, and then an attempt to preserve those. And a good example of this was the Dotson Farms rezoning request. We knew that we had natural resources designated on this site. We knew that the map wasn't accurate, but we did know that there were some on the site, and so Mike is working with the developer to identify those areas and prevent development within them. So at the March 6 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, there were concerns expressed about including the floodplain in the natural resource area layer as due to its vastness. It causes the details of the sources of the proposed layer to be lost. It was suggested that a page be added to the Story County Planning and Development website to highlight the layers, including links to their sources, and to explain the natural resource layer update process. So the Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend to the Board of Supervisors to make the following motion. The Story County Board of Supervisors supports the approach identified in this memo, including the identified data layers to the C2C future land use map natural resource layer update, and directs staff to continue the process to update the natural resource layer, the remainder of the townships in the county. Staff shall update the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Board of Supervisors on any changes to the data used for this project. Final map shall be brought back to the Planning and Zoning Commission for recommendation, and then approval by the Story County Board of Supervisors. Any other specific questions?
I was impressed in just reading through the description and what was on there, how you put this together, the formatting, the concept behind it, the information that will be available in the future, and the ability for all of the other townships to be able to follow this same model. I really was impressed. Thank you, Emily.
I'm good.
Okay. There will be next steps, I assume, because this is information, and then the question is, what do we do for sure with the information, more than what we're maybe doing now? Do you have any thoughts on that?
So today we're asking for, I guess, a motion that would approve the continuation of this work. Things may come up as we move forward, but kind of the general format for the update process, using those data layers and then, and then putting that information up on the Planning and Development website for specific review of the specific recordings.
This is the template, and again, if this is approved, and as we go along through this process, if there's additional resources that we come across, we will go to the Planning and Zoning Commission first and then get a recommendation to come through to the Board of Supervisors and give a recommendation of any changes.
Yeah, you will, the finalized proposed maps will go before the Planning and Zoning Commission and then the Board of Supervisors for action steps.
Okay. Any other questions?
No, so I'd make a motion in support of the information and the work that's been done, a direction that we continue the work on with other townships, and that recognizing that all of this final, final maps will flow through the Planning and Zoning Commission and back to the Board of Supervisors.
I second.
And just one comment, I just want to underscore that it has, to this point, it has not been the intent of the county to, to exclude or severely limit potential development. It has been the goal to recognize that development has impacts, and we need to recognize where it has greater impact so that we can get greater benefits from that, and putting this layer on it, at least at this point, is intended to say, if you want to develop in these areas, you better take a creative, pro-environmental look at it and protect what needs to be protected. It's not intended, at least at this point, to say, no development here.
I would say that's very well said.
Yes.
Okay, any further discussion?
None.
Sanders?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Thank you for the great work. Appreciate it. You've laid a good foundation for this, Emily. I know you won't be finishing it all, but you've
The last night should be before you.
I know, that's right. Yeah, Friday's your last day here?
Friday.
So now I'm allowed to be mad? I wasn't allowed to be mad in our last meeting.
No, no.
You can be mad.
All right.
Congratulations on the new job, and thank you for everything you've done for Story County.
Yeah, best of luck to you.
Okay, now, we are to LeAnn Harder, amendments to the ordinance development and review guidelines.
Yes.
Good morning.
Yeah, good morning.
Yeah, still there. Still morning.
Actually, this is pretty simple update. The ordinance development review guidelines were developed a number of years ago, just to act as some guidance for those individuals that put items on the Board's agenda through the ordinance review process. We had some different approaches, and was just to solidify the approach following the code of ordinances. It was, again, like I said, to help offices and departments, and it followed on the heels of the recodification in 2013. So we recodified in 2018, and lo and behold, I realized that we needed to update this to recognize that. So the changes are very simple. On page four of the guide, removed actually the reference to Appendix A of the Code of Ordinances, Chapter One incorporating it, just added reference to the Code of Ordinances online, so that from future times, we won't have to go back and then Appendix A. And then just added that language as the reference, and then reorganized the appendices. So with that, those are the nature of the changes. As I said, very simple. What I would do following today's action is to update the Internet, Internet site, and then send the link out to elected officials and department heads, and encourage the use of this. And I'm always glad to be a resource for those that want to go through the process, but we do have some templates in here for others to follow.
Any questions of LeAnn?
No.
Then I'd entertain a motion.
I so moved that we approve this 2019 version as presented.
Aye.
Okay. Discussion?
None.
All in favor?
Olson is an aye.
Aye.
Merkin, aye. And next?
So as I was walking out of the room after the Board took action on the capital improvements plan a couple weeks ago, it was brought to my attention that two of the items that were in the CIP actually never made it into the budget. They were pulled following the time that the worksheets were handed out, if the Board will recall our process, and that message never really got to me. So they were still in the CIP. That's the Dakens Lake Campground and McCarland Nature Playscape. So what's before you today is a revised capital improvements plan with those two items out. They're not budgeted for fiscal year 2020, so they should not be included in the CIP.
Any questions for LeAnn?
None.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? No discussion. Sanders?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Done. Thank you, LeAnn.
Thank you, LeAnn.
Ethan Anderson is next. Discussion and consideration of appeal in striking Iowa versus Peter Gillon, Igrikov's Ames LLC. Igrikov, excuse me.
Yes, good morning. So we had that adverse ruling two weeks ago today, and I think for the reason we discussed in closed session, that in appeal, this matter would be appropriate to get some clarification and review from District Court.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Yeah.
Comment?
Just a second. We have a motion and a second.
Yes.
So you'd like to comment?
And then I have a comment first, please.
Okay.
Okay, so this has been hard for me because of, as you know, we're losing our manufactured housing in general and in the community, and so mobile home isn't affordable housing. And so I wish that there had been another way to have resolved this before we ever got into litigation on this. So I just, I just want to make note that sometimes there are hard decisions to make, and I understand the principle that we're supporting a principle here with my motion, so.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Gillon?
No, I'm Mr. Holland. Mr. Gillon is attorney.
Pardon me.
And with no, I believe we had informal notice of today's hearing, but no formal notice from either counsel or court. We would have expected the professional courtesy, but
Excuse me?
Would have expected the professional courtesy, but as happens, I believe you reached out in person, so I appreciate that. It appears the Board's ready to
Excuse me, could you say your name?
Brian Holland of the David Brown Law Firm.
Thank you.
Opposing counsel on a matter that is presently pending, evidently. Looks like the Board's ready to move pretty quickly, so I assume you hashed everything out in your closed-door session. I wanted to give some voice to this issue, though. As Ms. Olson stated, and as we've stated throughout the process, we would have liked to avoid litigation. This has been pending in one form or another since May of last year. So this isn't something that was rushed into by the county or by my client. The issue is, from my perspective, we have consistently held the same position throughout with the Department of Planning and Zoning, with the County Attorney's Office, with the Board of Adjustment. We've made the same point over and over and over and over, which is the point that the court latched on to and is the reason that the county, their claim was not upheld, okay? So yes, we've tried to work with the county. We sent a letter to the department asking for permits, and if permits weren't going to be given, said, let's just fast-track this to a variance. Jerry, you know, with respect, he said, I don't think I can make this decision on my own. We need to send it to the Board of Adjustment. I say, fine. I say, fine. We don't need to hear from the Board of Adjustment because the permits can just be issued. I understand you think this is a gray area. I assumed he had advice of counsel as well. So we go to the Board of Adjustment, present the same case. Board of Adjustment says, well, essentially, planning has suggested that we turn this down, that we reject the variance, with roughly 30 seconds of discussion. So after the Board of Adjustment's decision, I again go back to the department and to your counsel and say, okay, what can we do here? Is there any way we can meet in the middle? And the answer was unequivocally, no. The Board of Adjustment made its decision. The Board of Adjustment's decision will stand. We are not doing anything. So we said, okay, I'll do what I properly, in hindsight, should have done at the outset and just said, sue us. That would have been faster. It would have been cheaper for my client and we would have been in the same position we're in today, but, you know, 10 months ago. We attempted to work with the county and I will say that I am continuously and constantly praising Story County at all levels of its local government. Our main office is in Des Moines, so I deal with Warren, Houghton, Dallas, essentially every county in central Iowa and mercifully some counties in eastern Iowa as well. And I am constantly talking to my colleagues about how easy it is to work in Story County, both especially with Jerry's department and with the County Attorney's Office. I think this was a failure to live up to those standards, those admittedly lofty standards. This was not local government at its best. And we now have an adverse ruling from a court. And if I was representing a private entity saying, should we appeal this? I would say it's not worth your money. And the county is paying for this, by the way, right? And I'm paying for it as a taxpayer of Story County. I'm here as an advocate for Mr. Gillen, but I'm also one of your constituents. Okay, I passed the ballot last November. Now, maybe that's why my assessment went up 70 grand, is to help pay for the legal bills. But the analysis here is not, this is not a free appeal. And I understand the board is, and Chairman Merkin, I see your eye in the clock and I know a judge, eye in the clock, wants me to wrap up. The point being, though, that we have attempted to work throughout, okay? I will put my next month's salary on one of two things happening. You appeal and you will either lose or it will be rendered moot by a bill that's presently in front of the Iowa State Senate that is set to be voted on, voted on in theory today, which makes this exact situation permissible and would forbid the county from enforcing its ordinance as your counsel thinks it ought to be enforced. So you have able legal advice. I have no doubt about that. You're not going to listen to me. No one has throughout the course of this process. I don't expect to start that today. But do understand, Mr. Gillen is a taxpayer. We have done everything we could to have an amicable resolution and there is often lip service to affordable housing. And everyone wants affordable housing until it's in their backyard. And that's what this is. I think it's a waste of taxpayer money. I think it's a waste of county time to appeal this decision. And like I said, I would wager my next month's salary that you either lose on appeal or that decision is rendered moot by Governor Reynolds in the next week.
Lynda, can I go first? So Ryan, first of all, appreciate you so much. You do such a phenomenal job representing and advocating for your clients and have always enjoyed your work. I don't want you to get in the habit of wagering. We need you to hang on to those dollars to pay your taxes and assessments here in Story County. So be careful with wagering that stuff. Let me just say that I always prefer when you can find middle ground where both parties are able to maintain the authorities that they believe they rightly have by law and a landowner can do what they lawfully want to do on their property. That didn't happen in this case. And I understand you advocating for your client, much like we have to protect, as we see it, we have to protect the rights and authorities and responsibilities of Story County. And sometimes that means that we got to litigate a situation. When we get a ruling that we don't think is clear enough to truly define what our rights and responsibilities are, it's our responsibility to go forward with that. I think this is Story County being Story County and I think because it's on the opposite side of you, maybe you like to see that it's not Story County. But in my view, I've been here a long time. This is Story County being Story County. The second thing I'm going to ask is separate from this conversation and that is, would you play, I've asked a couple of times. I know you've been notified a couple of times. Please, please, it's inappropriate for your client to be contacting any of us, but I'm speaking for me, me directly. I'm getting personal messages from him. As long as this is going on, it needs to be handled between councils. And so if you could please relay that to Mr. Gillen for me, as long as this is going on, I would really appreciate it. That's all I have.
Yeah, first point, I would, I agree with you. And I've had this conversation with Ethan. I've had this conversation with Jerry. And I've had this conversation with you.
Absolutely.
Right. We disagree on some things. That's why there's a guy or a woman in black robe to make that decision. That decision's been made. I understand the county believes it has a good faith argument to be made. I'm not claiming this is a frivolous appeal. I'm claiming y'all are on the wrong side of it.
Sure.
And as to your second point, it's been communicated to Mr. Gillen. The only thing I would caution, same thing I've cautioned Ethan about is, Mr. Gillen's a taxpayer.
Sure.
Story County. So long as there's not been a request like you've just made, please don't contact me personally, then I would hazard, I'd not want the board to say, you know, a constituent is not permitted to reach out to me. I understand now this is before the Board of Supervisors. At no point prior was it before the Board of Supervisors. I'm assuming when Mr. Gillen called previously, and I know he called Ms. Olson a handful of times, it was before the court. That was, there is nothing that you all could have done while the case was pending, short of dismissal. And I don't think that was going to happen. I understand the point, the message has been relayed.
Okay, we all understand that we are not going to, yes, you understand that none of us are going to be returning Mr. Gillen's phone calls.
I have no expectation one way or the other.
Thank you. Okay, I think we probably will not be. This is a matter under litigation. We are represented by counsel. We're not litigating it here. This is not a court of law. You asked for time to make some comments. I've granted you that time and appreciate you keeping those reasonably brief.
Respectfully, thank you very much.
I would like to weigh in here just a moment about the contact. I appreciated that Mr. Gillen, overall, he was passionate at times, but he was also responsive to what I pointed out. He might have been too passionate or overstepped abound. And I want to make note that I appreciated your client did that in contacting me. I think he was frustrated sometimes because I gave an awful lot of my attorney, would not allow me to answer that or you would need to send your attorney to talk to my attorney. So, but I do want to make note of that for the record. There's sometimes people who call us who just, they go beyond advocacy into when they get kind of that passion going. They don't back down. So I want to thank you for that as far as that goes. But I also want to add my voice separately that it really isn't appropriate anymore for your client to call me.
I appreciate you redirecting my client to my office anytime you get seen.
Are there any other questions from the board?
None.
Any discussion? I'll entertain a motion.
We already did the motion, second. We just need to vote.
We did, okay, then we'll vote.
I did the motion, if you want.
Okay, thank you. Olson?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
Merkin, aye.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now we have departmental reports. Engineer Darren Moon?
Darren, I got a compliment on your department last week, late in the week, and I knew you were coming to present today, so I thought I'd pass it on here. But once again, it was about the excellent response with all of our winter storms, et cetera, that we had, all the weather conditions. And this person who provided the compliment actually walked into the office to provide it, also said that Dennis Clatt, who apparently is someone involved with clearing your road, did a great job. So I just want to pass that on.
Thank you. That's kind of what I was going to start with here. Last three months, Mother Nature has not been kind to our department in particular. Dealt with extreme cold, multiple blizzards, record snowfall, flooding, and now we're still dealing with the frost boils. So starting out with the blizzard conditions and the snow events through February, just a few pictures here of what we're dealing with out in the rural areas. Even our pavements, pictures don't adjust to how high the snow was piled and we have to come through with a wing and pile it back even further. Dealing with that throughout the county. This is R-38 south of Ames. I don't have any good pictures of the real traffic jams on R-38 itself during the blizzards, but this is one of the gravel side roads here. R-38 comes through. You know, it got so bad, people just pulled over and got out of their vehicles because they could not see where they're going. But we get 30, 40, well, we had 50 mile an hour winds. We get that predicted, people just need to stay home. It does not look bad when you're in town because the houses and trees block the wind. So they figure they'll make it. They get out in the rural area and you cannot see your front bumper. So we get, you could see, we plowed up to this vehicle. It was probably completely covered with the drift. They cause drifts when they get stuck out there, too. So when we get plowed up to them, we have the sheriff hook up their license plate and then call them and say, we've been plowed up, too. Please go out and get your vehicle out as soon as you can. When that doesn't happen, we really appreciate the sheriff's cooperation that Sunday night. They actually went out with one of our motor grade operators and went road to road and towed these vehicles out one at a time in preparation for Monday morning when there would have been absolute gridlock throughout the county because the state roads were plugged as well. We got a bunch of these back open. It opened things back up and traffic flowed that next Monday. So it was a big thanks to the sheriff's department helping out there. For the most part, we were out nonstop, even through the blizzards. We pulled off just one day for just a few hours. When it got so bad, it was dangerous, but we were out there for emergency situations if somebody got stuck. And there was a number of cases when we did go out and get stranded people out. We have a number of dedicated operators out there and a lot of them are first responders and fire responders, so that's natural to them and they did a great job of that. Couple more pictures of the drifting. This is why we have setbacks. We get a building really close to the road right away. That's over 10-foot-high drift. It went all the way across the pavement. Those are tough to deal with. And then this is just, that is a mailbox there. A lot of mailboxes were hit and you can see why. We don't even know where they are. Half the time they're completely buried with snow. If we hit them, we do fix them on our own, but if the snow hits it, which we had a lot of, it is the owner's responsibility to replace that mailbox. But it got very difficult. We did have a salt delivery issue again this year, unfortunately. We ordered, I think, 200 or 300 tons in early January and we did not see that for, I think, two months' stretch. They have 10 days to get it delivered or they get penalized. So we are going to penalize them on their contract, but that doesn't do us any good when we don't have salt. We just, we did make the decision before the winter. We have two bins. This is usually 600 tons and 600 tons. This is usually all salt and this is mixed. So we only have about 200 tons of salt here. But we made the decision to fill both of them, so we had 1,200 tons to start with. If we would not have done that, we would have run out of salt midway through the winter and that would have been a bad situation. I did want to go back real quick on that R-38 picture. We had a very unique case where we had about an inch of sleet come down right before that snow came down and it hard-packed on R-38 in particular. It gets a lot of traffic as well, so it pounded it down. We could not get that off for about a week. I've never seen that before. We had to scrape on it constantly with our underbodies, put pressure on them. But I've never had a case where it took us so long to get the snow and ice off the pavements. So that was a struggle, but we eventually got it off. And being short on salt and sand didn't help at the time. Wanted to touch base a little bit on the flooding that hit us next. About, we had about 20 roads closed due to the flooding and most of it was our big streams. The skunk and the squaw got out of its banks. So just a few pictures of our normal spots. This is down by what we call a skew bridge, a skunk river on R-77. Typical washouts, this happens every time the skunk gets out of its banks. This is the road that goes back to the Ames Water Treatment Plant, washed out again. And then we had a lot of washouts on just the gravel roads where the ditches were full of snow still when the melt and the rain hit. So the water jumped a lot because the flow couldn't get down the ditches. So we pull that out with our excavator and pile it on the road for a while till it dries out and then we can spread it and fill in these holes that were eroded out for the flooding. Still have two roads closed at this point and they're both bridge-related. This is Isaac Walton Bridge. Debris hit the front stringer and knocked the front plank off. And the other one is, well, this is the same bridges before the flooding. We did some repairs to it to keep this bridge open because it's one on our list, probably won't get replaced someday. You can see we had some reinforcing planks here because these beams were actually already cracked. So this damage probably isn't something FEMA would have paid for anyway because our bridge inspection report showed it was already cracked. But the other structure is the one we're also thinking about closing. This is by the hole in the wall by Cambridge. It's posted three or five tons, I believe, and we can't get equipment over it to maintain it, so it gets in really rough condition. But it's just another reason we probably need to get this one closed. That brings us to the muddy conditions we're currently under. We have two things going on. One is just the thaw. The road's starting to thaw and then it's frozen underneath. You're going to get that layer which is mushy. The black spots are where it's a little thin in rock, but for the most part, the problems we're having out there isn't really a rock issue. It's a frost boil issue. We'll hit these black spots eventually, but right now we're focusing on the frost boils. We had a number of incidents, unfortunately. We're dealing with haulers. They're hauling that stover away. There's farmers hauling grain in. They're hauling manure. Those are difficult to handle. We have situations where a farmer will call in and say, I'm going to start hauling today. These two miles are going to be absolutely destroyed. They even tell us they're going to do it. So there's nothing we can do about it at this point. Our association's tried to work with the legislature, tried to change some laws or something we could do, but at this point, we could get the sheriff to go out, but I don't know what grounds he would have to stop them, illegal vehicles. But we need them to, just to recognize they're damaging the road. There's some issues with contract grain, I know. They have to have the grain in on certain dates now that they didn't used to in the past and so they have to get it hauled in. That's unfortunate, but had a lot of roads torn up to the point where there's a foot rut for two miles and then that was during the freeze-thaw cycle. So freeze, solid, foot-deep rut and vehicles could not get through there as a regular vehicle. So struggle with that. Also, I wanted to point out the frost boil and if you're not, I'll give you a quick class in frost boils. What's going on, this is a cross-section of the road. We have the top frozen section that always happens in the winter. But we have certain soils that are susceptible to wicking water up from the water table and that sucks that water up and creates these ice lenses underneath. So essentially have a layer of ice here. So when our thaw starts, this portion thaws out and it gets soft, but you have a hard layer of ice underneath and until that thaws out and the water can, you know, go down, we've got a frozen zone that's no longer frozen, so it's a wet mess. It's hard in pictures to show how bad this is, but there's huge ruts here. This is what we call frost boil. It starts to pump the mud up out of the road mud up out of the road and to the point where cars are bottoming out on this. So we let it go as long as we possibly can because when this crosses over, it kind of protects the road and it won't go really bad. But this got to the point where cars were getting stuck. So we had to cut it off the motor grader. It makes a real muddy mess. So there's no base. You'd have to core this out probably two, three feet deep and replace it with all rock. But that's what we're dealing with all throughout the county right now. So if you get the road complaints, there's very little we can do until these thaw out and the water can go down and dry this out to where we can get our equipment on. Our equipment sinks in deep. Few pictures of 663rd south of Maxwell. You can see the road closure in the back. We just put those up where cars can get around them, but they know that's a really bad frost boil. There's nothing we can do. We have to dig the whole road out and replace it and we can't do that. 750 miles of road. So it's going to take some time. This can take weeks to dry out at times. We're starting to see them firm up a little bit, but we're struggling with this even today yet. We put up cones where we can and this is a dead end road. So it's our only access out. So we make sure that people at least have one way in and out. They're not going to be able to use both lanes for a while till that firms up and we can get our equipment back over it to maintain it. But lots of complaints the past couple of weeks and I just want you to be prepared if you get the calls. We try to explain the best we can what's going on. It's Mother Nature. It's out of our control and it's not really a rock issue. They'll complain, "Just get out here and blade up a rock on it." We can't. It's a struggle. Last year was the first year in my 25 years, not a single frost boil in the entire county. I'd never seen that before. I had a feeling we were going to pay for it this year and we are. Rock hauling. This is what we're going to contract rock haul this spring as soon as the roads get firm enough to let them go on it because they have a lot of heavy loads. They're going to be hauling on it. But that's the portion of the county just to the east Move on to construction projects. We had seven projects coming up this year and they've all been let already. Very good prices on all of them. Box culverts and one overlay job, E-63. This is asphalt. We actually had three bidders, which was nice. We usually just get Manass, but Manass was still 200,000 less than the other two bidders. This was far enough east and southeast in the county that there's a Marshall County outfit that bid on it. But good price on that and very good prices on the box covert projects as Brings me down to construction project design. We're currently designing 13th Street Extension for paving. We're going to start buying right away for that this summer. Started survey work on University 530th, south of Ames for a paving project as well. And we're just going to start the utility coordination. There's some major power poles and water lines we're going to have to work around. And then we're working on the next year's projects, Hickory Grove Overlay, 535th paving for the bike path, and then seven other bridges and box Budget amendment. Lisa touched on that earlier in the board meeting. Overtime cost for us, we budget 50,000. We're right about the 100,000 range right now. So we doubled our overtime. But I would point out, in 2010, we were 131,000. So it's been worse than this year. Fortunately, we're isolated pretty much to February on a lot of our overtime. Equipment repairs is the worst part of a budget this year. We've had a lot of repairs and I'll get to that next. We had 150,000 additional amended in for that. And then the last item was for construction and that's just how we budget now. Our carryover projects, we budget $0. So we have to amend in the spring to bring those back in. Getting back to the equipment repairs, we continue to have costly, heavy equipment repairs on our trucks. That's mostly related to the new exhaust systems. We're still trying to get those figured out and they're costly, but they have to be fixed. With all the electronics, it pretty much shuts the trucks down. Seen an increase in our parts budget and our outside labor due to that. And a couple of the big items were our mechanic's truck had a head gasket. That was 15,000. And then we had a 2009 single axle dump truck. That was 30,000 for a brand-new engine. And then the biggest one was we did own two of the motor graders out of the 12 motor grader fleet we have. And one of those, we had our spares out quite a bit this winter helping out. And one of those had a major transmission failure. And this is a picture of it in our back shed. It's completely dismantled. It's pretty much just a cab. But that's, the estimate is 65,000 to 70,000 to fix that. And it's already been sold to another county because this is one we're turning in. So they're waiting on it, but they're going to get a new transmission at least. But we're going to have to pay it before it goes, unfortunately. So that was bad timing.
Darren, how long has it been down, if you will? I mean...
This has been in the shop for two to three weeks being repaired. They're hoping to get it done this week, I believe. But we had, I suppose that's one of the downsides, very few downsides to the motor grader lease. But we had one particular issue that came up because the winter was so bad. The ice was getting stuck down in a hole and the electronics that articulate the motor grader bends it in the middle, had some sensors in it and it would break them because the ice would freeze in there. And then we'd turn and then the ice would break the sensors. We haven't had bad winters for four years, so we didn't discover that till now. So there was times when we had two or three motor graders down at a time. So our spares were out helping out at the time. But I think they fixed that issue with the new motor graders we're getting this week. So that was my next topic is the motor grader lease renewal. New motor graders were all delivered last week and we're working on the transition. The lease was up about a month ago, but we're fortunate we didn't have to do the transition then because we're right in the middle of the blizzard. So we couldn't really do the transition. So roads aren't great right now, but we are able to get the new ones out. We're keeping the wing on the side and the front. These are both the snow equipment attachments. So we have to remove, these are the three old ones we're getting rid of. These two already had the equipment removed. This one doesn't. So we're able to run the brand-new ones out there without the new stuff installed because all we really need is the blade underneath on them. So we'll transition them back in when the roads get better and get the front attachments and the wings attached. Make sure they're working properly on the new ones. But it's going to be a slower transition than we planned because the roads, we need to have the motor graders out on the roads right now. And we're working on the, these new fleet of motor graders will have that new DEF exhaust fluid tank. So we'll have to get tanks installed at our outshops. So when they fuel up, they have to fuel a smaller DEF tank as well. And we've got them all out at the shops. We're just getting them wired in. So getting that all prepared. Loris, you've been dealing with electronic signatures, the DOT. I just wanted to point out, the good news is we're working with the DOT to allow the board to sign a resolution that will allow the engineer to do this.
Great.
Hasn't been easy and we didn't think it would be easy and it hasn't. So hopefully we'll get that out of the board's hands. We should be able to handle that.
I just want to say how patient Tyler was and I appreciate that because he had to come over a couple of different times to get it worked out. So thank you, Darren.
Hopefully that'll change by next winter. Five-year construction program was approved today by the board and our budget. New map was put up back here behind you today. So that's newest and updated map. We also put that online. I would point out, the only thing to update you on the construction program is the Huxsey Agreement. The board passed that for the $1 million to go to 560th pavement. Their council did approve that. We weren't sure if they were going to be agreeable to terms or not, but they did approve it and sent it back this week. So that agreement is finalized. Touch base just quick on the federal aid, the bridge bundling grant. We still have not gotten word. That's that bridge up here on E-18. We've applied. We still think we're going to get it, but we're waiting on an answer from the federal government. Have not got it yet. Our biannual bridge inspections are now completed. We had three bridges that needed immediate load posting revisions, but that is far fewer than we've had in recent past. So that's good news. I think we're making some ground in at least our...
Feels like we're making some headway.
Yes. Some of those will be somewhat easy fixes. One pile here and there, we can get fixed on our own and bring them, the posting back up. Hickory Grove pipes. Conservation is in the process of draining Hickory Grove Lake and we did have an issue arise last week. There's two major pipes that flow under the pavement in between the two portions of the lake. During the drawdown, it undercut one of them and water's flowing underneath. So we've got a big void underneath. So we're keeping a very close eye. It's hit hardpan clay, so we don't think it's going to go any further. But there's a big void that we're going to have to fix as soon as this portion of the drain, lake drains through. These are the two big pipes. Can't see it, but we've sandbagged all in front of this to try to prevent the flow, but it's still going under there somewhat. They're currently digging over here. There's a pipe that's about 10-foot deeper. It's been buried over time. They're trying to expose that to get the lake drained. They ran a bore machine through it last week. They made it all the way through, but they still can't get the water flowing through it. So today, they're actually going to run a water jet through it to try to clean it out some more. If they can get that opened up, this lake will drain fairly quickly and then we can get in here to repair the undercutting. We'll have to pump a lot of grout underneath there. But fortunately, the road doesn't show any signs, it's pavement on top and it hasn't shown any signs of voids or collapsing yet. So a couple thousand dollars in grout and work and hopefully back, get this back open. It's not closed, but we'll get the void fixed anyway. Shop update. We've moved into the new Kelly and Roland shops and the bathrooms were both built by our secondary roads staff before the winter got bad where they had free time to do that. So they're both up and running. I did point out the Roland shed. Fortunately, that ice event did bend the gutter over in the front.
Hey, before you go on, I just want to make a comment about the bathrooms in our shops because, you know, we got lots of rumbling that, "Oh, why would you, why would you build something and not finish it all the way?" And I just, I just want to point out again that that was a decision that was made in consultation with secondary roads based on two things. Based on one, the guys would have time as these things were getting finished to finish it off. But secondly, so that they could finish it off like they wanted it finished off as it is their, their home, if you will. And so it was really frustrating that, that from certain sectors, we, we seemed to take a little grief over something that was intentionally done and thought out. And it was, at least in my mind, never about the dollars that we saved by not finishing them off. It was about doing what made the most sense with taxpayer money and allowing our guys to have some ownership in the places they were going to work.
I would agree. I was frustrated as well and I would say that's coming from a few, most of our guys.
Fully recognizing. I just, I couldn't pass up the opportunity to say that.
Outshop update. We plan to build a salt bin in the Kelly Shed this summer and that will help alleviate some of our salt storage. The more we can get brought in in the summertime when it's not such on high demand, we can store it and have a higher volume for the winter. It will help. We did use the Ames salt shed this past winter, but we no longer have a need for that anymore. So we are done with that building. I know Keith's using it for storage at one of his trailers right now, Keith Morgan. The building probably does need some paint, but we're probably at the point, we'll have some discussions with facilities on how we can turn that over if the county wants to use it for storage for other departments. But we are done with it at this point. Possibly a shop building for Salem McCallsburg. This is our existing building right here and we have a pretty small lot. We're actually out of bounds a little bit with our V-plow right there on the neighbor's property, but we're pretty tight. This is the building that could come up for sale. I know they, I think they contacted Loris as well. So we did meet with them. Looked at the building and it would work for us. That's a picture of the building. Here's the inside. They let us pull the motor graders in to make sure the doors were wide enough and everything. They purchased this just a few, couple of years ago for about 50,000, I believe. But since, they put all the LED lighting, the heating and some concrete work on the floor. So they have put a lot of work into the building. We're waiting, he wants to build another building in town. So he's kind of waiting to see what that's going to cost and if he's, before he can put a number on what he needs from this building and whether it's worth him to move or not. So we're waiting on that number, but we're definitely interested in the building, especially the land would really help as well. We'll just combine the two if this works out. It does not have a bathroom. That's the only drawback to this at this point. So we'd have to build the bathroom Just wanted to touch on the radios real quickly. I've got a meeting next week with the sheriff on, we have some actual costs now. We have not decided our department if we're going to go to the new system or stick with electronic engineering. There's some benefits to both, but it sounds like we're going to have to decide sooner than I thought. There's some tower issues come July 1st. So we're going to have to make that decision fairly quick, but we'll finally get some numbers next week. We'll be able to weigh it out. And if we do decide to go with the new system, we'll probably take a budget amendment for us to purchase those new radios. But since we bonded, we do have a little extra free money in the local side of our budget. We can probably handle that now. Couple drainage district issues. Again, DD-20 up by Fernal. Kent Rhodey's working on the railroad crossing permit with the railroad. It takes a long time and he's almost got that permit from the railroad to get the bore through. His estimate is 49,000 for the bore. The new rules, he could just get quotes, but he doesn't think it's going to cost that much more just to do a letting on that. So I think he plans on having a letting for that bore. And then the tree in Fernal that's out there, we have a new property owner that is probably going to allow us to take this tree out. So we're going to work with that landowner because that's where the county tile is as well. So that's a good development.
Go back one. Yep. We still working on the vacation of the road to the north right there?
Yes. And we're waiting to make sure this tree thing's going to work out because we're going to do the tile here and here at the same time. But if this, we don't need to do the tile here. If we can get that tree out, we'll just do this tile and then work on the vacation and all that at the same time. That's still in the works. I don't have a picture of it, but we have another railroad tile issue. This one is actually on Dave Toots' property, our prior tile foreman. So we're working with him. We tried to work with the railroad directly to get it fixed and finally got to the point where we realized that wasn't going to happen. So I've turned this one over to Kent Rhodey as well. If he can get the permitting going as a little quicker on this one, we can maybe combine the two into one letting, save a little money that, that way. DD-112, this is down south between Cambridge and Maxwell. It's right out in the middle of the section. Unfortunately, a large hole and there's a high point here. So the tile is very deep, 10, 15-foot deep and very sandy soil, which makes it very difficult to work with. But we got a huge hole. It's probably 50 truckloads of dirt. Avoid right now. It's hard to get a contractor to give us a bid upfront because they don't know what they're getting into with the sandy soil. So we're working with construct. We've got an hourly cost. It'll only take them probably a day or two to get the tile fixed. But it's going to probably take two excavators. It's about five, six grand per day. But the bigger issue after that's going to be finding the dirt to fill that hole. 50 truckloads of dirt. They've talked to landlord. They think they're going to be able to shave down a high point of the hill and just a short trucking distance to get it. So we're working one on just an hourly estimate. So we'll be inspecting that with our own crews to make sure they're doing it a timely fashion. And they'll have to do that, truckloads of dirt from in, in the project. So we're talking 10,000 to 20,000. We're still well under the threshold for having to have a hearing or anything. And it's strictly just a repair. So it's got to be done. Fortunate thing is it's a small district, the same one as Dave Toots. Those are both small districts. So these landowners are probably going to get a pretty big bill out of that, unfortunately. That's the unfortunate side. So beware of that. And the last one is the, the week's development down in Slater. It's been turned over to Kent Rhodey as well. He's working directly with the developer on our requirements and then at some point it'll be brought back to the board for action on allowing this subdivision to go over the district like this. And I didn't have it on the sheet, but Polk Story, we're also working on a hearing for that. It's gotten to the point where it's going to need an engineering study. There's enough issues with it. We're, we'll hire Kent to do an engineering study on that.
Darren, I'm going to let Dean Landry know. I assume he'll let the Helens know about next week for that hearing.
That'd be good. Thank you. Dust control applications are due to the dust control vendors by April 19th. And then the first application goes down about mid-May for dust control. And lastly, we have a new administrative assistant, Bree Van Sickle. She came out of the auditor's office and she's doing an excellent job. She's a local resident, knows a lot of the farmers. That really helps out. So we welcome Bree to our office. Any questions?
So you went from snow to mud to dust control.
Yes.
Ah, the life of an engineer.
Don't you wish you went on as one season long?
Never been so happy to see dust in my life.
Good job, Demon. Good job, Dean.
Thank you. Okay, we have no other reports. Um, upcoming agenda items, is there anything that either of you have to suggest for the list? Okay. Um, public forum number two, comments from the public on items not on this agenda. The board may not take any action on the comments due to the requirements of the open meetings law, but may do so in the future. Any members of the public present? Anybody here can talk to? Okay. Um, liaison assignments, committee meetings, update, meeting updates and announcements from the supervisors. Loris?
Um, there are a couple of items I just am hoping that maybe the board could take a look at in the future. I got a phone call last week, um, uh, from a realtor who had a client who wanted to build in the fringe and start a home business. Jerry dealt with it, Jerry's well familiar with this, um, but, uh, I'm wondering if maybe then, um, Jerry and Deb could take a look at the realtor's issue. It has to do with how we determine how many trips versus visits someone is allowed and aims varies, has a different scale for determining about when the business is getting too big. And ours counts by, there's so many visits that we allow per, um, per resident in the property. So if you have four or five people living in the property and you do it down basically type six per, um, per person living in the property, that's a whole lot different than if you're a single person living in the property and you wanna start, uh, the same small business. So Jerry's aware of it and I believe I mentioned it to Deb too, it's a...okay, good, I see the nods out there. So I just wanted to let you know, I'd kinda pass that on to them, I forgot about that. And then, um, the conversation about mobile homes. Um, back when we were dealing with Crestview, um, a former supervisor, Chitty and I had had a conversation about maybe we should go through the mobile home code and take a look at what might be so restrictive in citing, um, on...as far as the units go, et cetera, that are we preventing anyone from bringing forward any new mobile home parks in the county? And it was...and the conversation was around affordable housing. Then, of course, um, that kinda went away and now we've got a new board here and I was hoping that maybe we could bring that forward at some point to take a look at the ordinance and see if we do have some items in the ordinance that are making it difficult for our existing mobile homes, if they're out of compliance, but more important than if someone would want to build a new mobile home park or, um, what have we got in there that seems overly restrictive, uh, given that...that the type of housing is different and the incomes that people normally would have to live in the housing would be different? And so are we inadvertently prohibiting the type of affordable housing? So that's a request going forward, um, but I thought maybe it would be the consent of all three of us if we would want staff to spend time that way.
Rick, you have thoughts?
Yeah, so I struggle, so...so I believe that we need to promote affordable housing, particularly in our smaller towns where we can. I...I struggle with everything that we're going through, so we talked about the natural resource overlay out in the county and everything we're going through, um, out in the county. Loris, I struggle...struggle to picture where there's locations in the county right now that's not within two miles of...of some city, um, that we would talk about putting something in like this, what we know about wastewater and what we know...we know so much more than we knew back when the last rural mobile home park was created. I...I'm struck...so I'm fully supportive of the concept of affordable housing and use of mobile homes and smaller homes is that. I'm just having trouble picturing how that would occur outside of municipality and whether we want to utilize staff resources on something that...that...and maybe you could point to a couple areas that I'm not thinking of. I can't think of a place in Story County that I would have a mobile home. I can't think of places that I would do multiple things and that's what I'm struggling with.
And that's good, that's good feedback. So maybe the first step is to say, do we have some viable areas that would be under county jurisdiction? We know we have four, Jerry, isn't it, still?
Four active.
Four, yeah. Uh, so we know there are four out there. Is this something that might, um, that we have still out in an area or right on the fringe of a county? So maybe that's just what we need to look at is, is would there be...would there be a potential for that ever to happen?
And I...absolutely, and I would suggest a good starting point. While it's two entirely different uses, Jerry and his staff just did an outstanding job identifying potential spots for debris, uh...
Sure.
Consolidation in the event of a...in the event of a natural disaster. And what we looked at were the same kind of things that we would need, I think, to have a favorable, uh, mobile home park, right? You...it needs to not be high-value ag land. It needs to...you have...either have direct or close access to paved roads. It, you know, those kind of things. It may be a reasonable starting point to just go back and look at those and say, okay, are there any places standing? I can't picture any.
I...do we know that we have people who are interested in developing mobile home parks out in the country?
Well, we don't know that we do, but this last situation, starting with Crestview then, but certainly with this last situation with Mr. Gillen, um, I did find that Mr. Gillen had some good points about just how we view mobile housing and that whole situation where going for a conditional use permit, um, did...that, uh, we kind of say a conditional use permit means that you will at some point, this use will...will disappear in the future and that's what we've taken. But yet with mobile housing, it's possible you've got the infrastructure brought up and the way to keep a mobile housing park viable then is to make sure that units can be swapped out when they become obsolete.
Absolutely, but isn't that...
So I know the question being, do we have that viability? Is it possible that no one's interested because of our regulations? Linda?
Well, I'm just trying to think of what kind of land is in high-value ag land and I think it's probably still kind of a swamp, quite honestly. Um, any...land...land that can be farmed is farmed, there's good reasons why land isn't farmed. I...
Yeah, so...so can I say this about the Hickory Grove, uh, mobile home park and and comparing it to our other parks? I believe Hickory Grove is a one-off. I...I don't think our other parks are structured the same as Hickory Grove, Jerry.
Non-conforming.
Yes, so it's a non-conforming use and so his concerns that he expressed to you, Loris, are different than the rea...so if we had a new mobile home park, let's say we had a spot, I don't believe that we would go down the road of a non-conforming use today, that's just what was done at that point.
It's a rezoning and a development plan that gets reviewed at staff level, P and Z and Board.
Point being, we'll never have another one like that. Regardless of where we go with this, we'll never have another one like Hickory Grove, that's a one-off.
I understand that, we don't want another one that's in that situation.
Here's a thought I have. Right now, planning zoning's down in the planner. It might not be a good time to, um...it...and when the planner's hired, there's gonna be training and orientation and all of that. I don't think right now is the time to put that request on staff when it's not a high priority, we gotta get it done now, kinda thing.
I agree with that. So I was asking for, maybe I didn't make that clear, I'm loo...this is, I...with their priorities for this year and those other, I feel that this...I just wanna get it on the list. I'm not particularly anticipating it to be on the list of something that we will look at for a month and I understand, yeah, so, but I'm bringing it forward now so it can start to slide under that list.
Jerry, do you wanna come up here and give the comment? You look like you do, so...
This is sounding like it might be a future work program item. One of the things that we're doing right now is reviewing the entire land development regulation, so we are looking at it in a chapter and as Rick mentioned, you know, we've done this, you know, studies, we looked at the north area, the Hoover Fringe and came up with opportunities given market conditions, given interest from property owners and developers in the...in the making changes there, that certain things could happen, so this is something that we could take a look at if we were to support.
One of my concerns and why I would like it to be at some time a work item is I'm concerned that we're not keeping, um, uh...someone may look in the county and be willing to go a mile and a half gravel all...all ways, but...but be able to get land that is not swamp land, but is also not a high lease score. But they're gonna look at the regulations and wonder what's gonna happen in the future, so that's...and I think we need to be in a position where we need to look at all kinds of housing. We know that we continue, we're gonna continue to need housing of a variety of levels for people who are coming that we're trying to attract to work. That's what I'm asking for, is that get on the work plan at some point and that we go at it at least with kinda that open mind.
I can tell you, since I've been here, we...I think we've only had one request and it was from Mr. Gillen's manager to find out what the process would be to expand his existing par幅 on a ten and a half acre parcel, so we provided some information to him on that process. And again, you...you...you treat it like a rezoning request, so it's gotta make...you have to make sure that it needs the land evaluation site assessment, that it's not highly, um, you know, high-value farm ground.
Right.
That it has a low lease score.
Here's another, there are discussions out there in Ziering, there's a discussion about little houses on trailers. I mean, it's really moving along and the gentleman's talked to DMAC and...and Ziering's promised a couple of lots, et cetera. Now that's way out of, I mean, it's in Ziering, okay, but so it's way out of also, but the thought zone. I'm just wanting to make sure that we're set up to entertain alternate ideas.
Loris, let me build on that because as you've been talking about this, excuse me, what I have been thinking about is how much ag land I see going to higher-level housing development right now and that we are losing ag land. I would...I...my mind goes to infill, like in Ziering, like in Collins, like in a lot of these smaller towns now where there's opportunities to build lower-income housing. And I know there's some people in those house...in those towns that are interested in it, there's already infrastructure, sometimes they need some more work on infrastructure, but it seems to me that the...the barriers are less where there's already...already infrastructure there, there's already been residential. And the other thing I see about mobile home parks is, um, how much people end up paying for lots.
So, um, on the first one, yes, those conversations are going out there. I've had conversations with different people and that was, you know, and looking at if the county would ever get directly involved in some monetary way. Um, and the other one, um, as far as the mobile home parks, I ju...I...I want to make sure that we are not shutting our eyes to and...and making it difficult should that person ever step up. Like I said, I'm not asking that it occur tomorrow, um, I'm glad to hear we're going over all the land regs because that sounds like it would be where it would fit into the program. Um, I just don't wanna say, oh, somebody lives in mobile home housing and, um, and look at that as not a viable option. Have you gone to look, I mean, a pricing, a new, uh, fourteen by fourteen or fourteen by sixteen foot now is not a small amount of money, but it's certainly closer to affordable than a new high-end house.
Jerry, would it...rather than, I'm gonna propose something, I mean, it's been a good discussion, rather than put something formally on your work program, could this be a discussion and you would actively keep in mind as you're going through the land?
Do you want to review?
Yeah, as you review.
And report back to the board?
Great.
Is that okay, Loris?
That's fine with me.
Okay.
Yep.
Good.
Okay, that's it, sorry.
Anything else?
No, no, I'm, uh, as you know, just, this week is pretty well adjusting to some changes regarding to my medical directions, so I don't have a lot big on, I am going to promise yes or no.
Well, take it...take it easy as you adjust.
Thank you.
Okay. Rick, what would you have for us?
I'm...I'm all set, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, I think I'm set too, I don't think I have anything that, uh, need to report on today.
So that move that we adjourn.
Okay, is there a second?
I'm second.
Okay, we're adjourned.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.